And and Lee.
Yep.
If you if you just want to reintroduce it for the purpose of the recorder.
Um.
Just just re-announce that we're starting, that's all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So the time is six ten. And we'll call the meeting to order. We started a little late because we were waiting on a quorum for commissioners, but we do have a quorum right now. And Peter, I'm going to make you co-host so you can help with allowing people into the meeting. We do have a few commissioners that won't be on the meeting tonight, but we are waiting on Peter Lynch to join, so he should be available soon. So thank you all. As you know, this is a special meeting of the ANC dedicated to the bio-retention discussion. We've had a lot of things going on. With that, including walkthroughs with D dot and the ANC has, I think, two draft resolutions that we'll be talking about tonight. But we want to start with introduction of commissioners, and I'm just going to go down the line as I see you all. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, Bruce Sherman, I represent Single Member District Zero Two, and for the purposes of this conversation related to bio-retention beds, we have twenty-six of them in my SMD.
Thanks, Bruce. And I'm Lisa Gore. I'm the Commissioner for ANC three, four, G zero one, which is Olive Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. And I just learned that we have about thirty-five of them on Oregon Avenue, so I probably have a good half of those. Thanks for coming. Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent Single Member District Six, which is largely the west side of Connecticut back to towards French Pikes with the commensurate. Welcome.
And Commissioner Nash?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jim Nash. I represent Single Member District Zero Three, which is the southeasternmost district in the ANC. It's around Broad Branch Military, as far north as McKinley.
All right, thank you. And when Commissioner Lynch jumps on, we'll have him introduce himself. Regarding, that's Commissioner Zeldin, let's admit him. Michael?
Hello.
How are you? Can you introduce yourself? We just started with introductions.
Yep, I'm Michael Zeldin. I'm three, G O four, which is Lafayette and the immediate areas around it.
And Councilmember Frumman, can you introduce yourself?
Thank you very much. I'm Councilmember Matt Frumman, and I am largely here to listen. I know this is an issue that's important to lots of people, and lots of people are working on trying to get to constructive solutions, and our office wants to be helpful in that effort.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us after such a long day. In terms of meeting procedures, we are pretty much following our standard procedure. For those in the audience, we just ask that you keep yourself muted. Please turn on your camera if you'd like to show your face. We love seeing you. If you have a question, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair or whoever's on leading the discussion. And we just ask everyone to be civil as possible. Commissioner Lynch, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hey, everybody. Sorry I'm late. I was stuck in traffic. My name's Peter Lynch. I am the Commissioner for ANC three, four, G O five, and thanks to everybody that has been weighing in on this issue that came out on Friday and that have been paying attention and weighing in. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
So with that, we don't have anything on the consent agenda. We do have the resident forum on the agenda. Commissioners, if you would, don't mind, do you want to amend the agenda to exclude that so we could go right into discussion?
That's sensible. I don't, most of the people's names seem to be people here for the bio-retention basin.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, if there's no objection, so we'll adopt the agenda with the amendment to exclude the resident forum. Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Six, zero. All right, so I'm going to turn this over to Commissioners Goslin, Nash, and Lynch to go over the topic and the set of resolutions and to lead the discussion on this.
Peter, do you want to start?
Sure, you know, I just hope, you know, I think we're basically all roughly on the same page. And Cherry Gore and Commissioner Goslin, I know you were at the Friday walk-around, so maybe you have some stuff to offer there, but I know I walked around the placements in SMD O five, and there's a lot of people that are very apprehensive about these and also have some very specific advice for D dot on where the placement of the bed should be. And there's concern about the upkeep of the beds, which I know is more of a subsidiary issue, but one that still matters. And so basically, the thrust of my resolution is is just to get more feedback, more communication between D dot and the specific residents that are next to the proposed beds. And then where beds are, as Commissioner Nash has brought up, taking up the full side of someone's street parking, that they be reduced. And then I've proposed, because of the unique parking constraints in SMD O five, that if there are spaces, which there's a handful that take up more than two parking spaces, which I think we've talked about through email, comes out to about thirty feet or so, that they're kept at two parking spaces and not go to four or five. I think there's one place where that may not be a concern to the parking, but just about everybody that I talked to in my SMD, where there is a five-space parking removal, they all thought that that was going to be a pretty big hindrance. And the people on Chevy Chase Parkway have also been really focused on this and rallying around this for a variety of reasons, one of which is that they can't easily access their homes when the alley behind them gets icy. A lot of the folks that live in these places are a little bit older and need that front access and are possibly worried about ambulances and delivery services. So that's basically the long and short of it. We just saw the resolution that came across from Cherry Gore and Commissioner Goslin, and I'm sort of reading through that right now, but I hope we could just combine the two and get the best of both and have something for the community that helps everyone.
Peter, do you want to go over the context of your resolution? Because we don't have it posted. I know it was going through drafts as late as today. Do you want to give an idea of exactly what your resolution states so the community can have an idea?
Yeah, let me just say.
Oh, Peter Lynch. Peter Lynch.
Sure, yeah, let me, I just walked in, got stuck in traffic, so I am looking to pull it up.
Okay.
Right now.
So you want Peter Lynch to do a summary of his and then me to do a summary of Goddard? Okay.
Would you like me to just read mine or?
Or you can give a high-level overview. Just so they have an idea, because we don't have it posted, so just.
Sure, I'll go, I'll just go to the resolve section. So as ANC three, four, G urges that D dot, the D dot project team to make sure that each person living next to a bio-retention bed is connected with and heard from about the plans. One thing I found walking through is that many people didn't know about this. Number point two is bio-retention beds in SMD O five, and happy to open that up to the entire ANC. Due to the unique demands on parking in SMD O five, should not exceed two parking spaces per placement unless someone put in edits. I'm not sure if I want to take those just yet. If a bio-retention bed takes up the full street parking space in front of a residence house, that residence should be consulted in D dot, and the resident should come to an agreeable solution. Number three, a clear plan for the care of bio-retention beds is essential across the entire ANC. And number four, ANC three, four, G requests that D dot present their finalized plans to a meeting with the ANC and field questions and feedback about the project before implementing those plans. So that's what I have so far.
All right, Peter, you want to go next?
Say, the motivation for this draft was that I think it was concern on Lisa's part and my part that Peter Lynch's draft wasn't global enough, that it focused very much on SMD O five, the district he represents. And so this resolution tries to speak for the issues across our whole community and reprise the history of our previous resolutions on the subject. And it attempts to include everything in Richard Lynch's resolution save that the implication that budding property owners would have some sort of veto power over whether a bio-retention basin gets put in or not. So I simply reviewed the history of the discussion by this ANC of this issue. We passed, we passed two resolutions already, one focusing overall on the Broad Branch Stormwater Reprofit Project and another focusing particularly on the fifty-three-hundred block of Twenty-Eight Street. I point out that, and I simply say that we incorporate the rationale and our thinking in those two in this resolution, and that includes that we do support the goals of improved water quality, and we think that green infrastructure is a sensible way to go. I note that, as we had noted back in our previous resolutions, that while D dot has been involved in this process for two years now, this project, the Broad Branch project, we didn't get wind of the full dimensions of it until last fall. And this commission was mightily preoccupied with the Union Center Library issue throughout the fall, and so this is a we have been running on fumes trying to catch up with the bio-retention basin issue. But we certainly heard from many of you who are on this call, many neighbors, and had a number of serious problems pointed out to us. Proposed basins that entirely eliminate street frontage of adjacent residences, raising questions about how emergency vehicles and so forth could have access to the home. Basins that narrow some roadways such that residents are concerned or slow emergency response time and make it difficult for traffic, opposing traffic, both vehicle and bicycle and so forth to maneuver. Basins that would eliminate parking spaces along heavily parked streets. And then, as Lisa and I were both at a really well-attended walk-around last Friday, I thought the word, which we really have to thank D dot, the Infram Director Sharon Kirschbaum, and and the Stormwater Reprofit Team for being, for getting out there and sticking with us for a long time. I heard two, two additional issues that I had not realized, and I just pointed them out in this resolution, namely that these bio-basins are not designed to cope with torrential rain, which we get a lot of here. They're rather designed to cope with kind of the steady-state drizzle rain. In other words, the storm, the stormwater system that we have now is supposed to cope with these big torrential rains. And the other thing is that by their very design, bio-basins hold water in place, and people, particularly along Nevada Avenue, which is a very low-lying place, along portions of it, raise the concern that by their very design, encouraging water to stay in place and sink in the ground, raise the water table and therefore cause, raise the chance that their basements will be flooded, something that's already happened, that several of them say is already happening. I, when I get to resolved, I simply say, let me just say one other thing. Trying to write a resolution on this subject is trying to hit a moving target, because even today, Cherry Gore and I attended a meeting called by staff of Councilmember Frumman about the about the maintenance issues. And subsequent to that meeting and subsequent to our Friday walk-around, Infram Director Kirschbaum said, sent notes to some of our residents, and then the D dot liaison said that the department has decided to take a few weeks and intends to make some dramatic changes. I can find the exact word that was used. Some some significant, we are making significant changes to our proposed designs. Now, this may address just Twenty-Eight Street, but in any case, D dot is showing some flexibility that we have known about. So it is trying to hit a moving target to write a resolution. But my resolved, this resolve says that, given that D dot is preparing new designs for at least some of the disputed basins, that the department's timetable doesn't call for construction to begin until at least the spring of twenty-twenty-five, and that ANC three, four, G was tied up with other issues for so much of the period since it learned of the full dimensions of the agency's proposal, the commission asked D dot to extend the comment period for the Broad Branch project now set to close February ninth until, and I leave it open to this commission, what they want to say, I've suggested March fifteenth or April first. In the alternative, I just say that Director Kirschbaum said, well, we've got a lot of comment already. Do we really need anymore? If she doesn't want to extend the comment period, just announce a public pause until that time. My next resolved is, the commission asked D dot to provide individual written notification to every homeowner whose property would have bought a bio-retention basin in advance of making a final determination about location and size of a basin. This tries to incorporate Peter Lynch's concern about adequate notification. Next, the commission asked D dot to meet with ANC three, four, G and residents upon disputed, from disputed locations, and to receive feedback prior to making a final determination about either current or revamped designs. Next, in instances where D dot proposes to site basins in front of homes, the commission asks that the department take no more than half of a homeowner's street frontage and make best efforts to provide a minimum of thirty feet of unencumbered frontage. Next, in areas of high parking demand, of high demand for parking from homeowners and as importantly, nearby apartment dwellers, the commission asks that D dot ensure basins of no more than two-car lengths or about forty feet long. Finally, in instances where current homeowners notify D dot that they or a family member face a medical challenge that could require that they be transported by ambulance or fall in EMS, the commission asks D dot to agree to consult DC Fire and EMS officials about adequacy of emergency access in advance of making final determinations about basin location and size. And finally, I just say that Commissioner Sherman has asked that we add a provision discussing the issue of maintenance, which we discussed in some detail today at the Frumman meeting. And I have to say that the other department, the department that's ultimately in charge of of maintenance, the Department of Energy and Environment, there are people on this issue who are quite forthright that the way the city has performed today is not acceptable. And they've basically said, you got to take it on face from us that we'll do better. But so it is, it is, it's an issue that has so concerned this commission in the past that we, in fact, have a joint pilot project to try to involve adjacent property owners and interested neighbors in helping to maintain, not to construct, but to maintain these basins once they're open running. So that's my, that's my suggestion, and I, as I say, I hope, I intended that this incorporate all the points that Peter Lynch's version addressed, save what was an implication of his, that there might be a veto power by adjacent property.
Commissioners Zeldin? You're on mute.
So first, I couldn't follow that very well, and I couldn't get the document to open, so I apologize. And I had made comments to Peter Lynch's. Peter, those are my comments that you didn't read out loud about endeavoring to and the like. But I wanted to ask this question, which is, we received a email today from Christian Pinero. At, I received mine at three eighteen PM, which he says, you know, thanks for your input and following the walk-around. We have agreed to take the next few weeks to revisit our design plans for Spring Valley and Broad Branch Watershed. We will work hard to accommodate your input into the revised designs and identify additional opportunities to modify our approach while maintaining our project goals and meeting EPA water requirements. We'll be in touch with further analysis. So how does that play into what is being proposed here? It seems as if they are pausing it. The only question I couldn't discern from Christian's email was when they have agreed to revisit, does that still create an opportunity for us to be heard on the revised plans, or is that going to be just internal to them? And then are they going to just issue a proclamation? It would seem to me that our resolution, if it says anything, is thank you very much for taking into account our comments previously, and we welcome the fact that you are taking a pause, and what we ask you to do is to hear from us as you move forward with your new design plans to give us and the community an opportunity to be heard. It seems to me that that's what we're saying to them, and then once we hear, see what they're saying, then, you know, the granularity of what is contained in both Commissioner Lynch's and Commissioner Goslin's would seem more appropriate to put forward.
Could I respond to that? In addition to Christian Pinero's note at mid-afternoon, Commissioner, Director Kirschbaum responded. And so the draft of the resolution that I authored quotes her, and in fact, notes that there is this pause. All I'd say is, one of the things that this commission could do is simply decide to say, take my word and take this two-week pause and say, you know, thanks, and let's see your new designs, and that's a perfectly legitimate thing. I think, given that we've had a discussion about this that has gone on since September, that, and that to date, we have not seen any new plans that, one, saying, we want new plans, we want to be involved with the discussion and engagement around those new plans. We want them to contain certain, you know, be built around certain parameters, and we want a longer period than two weeks is a reasonable thing to do, and that's what the draft I've written does. It does not say, it does not say, we're not taking seriously this pause or the fact that the director has said she's going to listen to us on this. So there, that's how I think we put together. But if you want to advocate just simply accepting the D dot position and saying, let's see where we are in two weeks, that's one way to react.
Yeah, I guess it's what I'm saying, Peter, and I'm not quarreling with your resolution, although I just couldn't read it, that was, I just couldn't get it to open, is what I think is most important for us to be saying at this juncture is you are revisiting your design plans. We want to make sure that our voice is heard in that revision process. We don't want a proclamation that we then have to respond to when, you know, the horse is out of the barn. So I think the only point I'm trying to make is, thank you for hearing us. Thank you for taking a pause. This ANC commission insists that it be part of the decisioning process to what this new thing looks like, and then through that process, we can talk about only two parking spaces and et cetera.
Well, Michael, let me send you a copy of this, and you will see that it does, it does that very thing. It also suggests some parameters that I'm suggesting we say we hope they take into account, but it very much says that that we want to be part, we want to see their new designs, but we don't want it, you know, sent down from on high, and that's it.
Okay, well, as I said, Peter, I'm not quarreling with you. I think I just, for some reason, my computer wouldn't open it. And therefore, I'm just, and I couldn't follow everything you said, so that's all I'm trying to add. So it's not, it's not an objection, it's just, it was just a point of inquiry.
I think we're, we're both saying the same thing on that point, because we do make that clear in the resolution. You know, we can post that in the chat, or, you know, Peter, read it out to him, so he is clear on what that language is. We can also strengthen that if need be, Michael. But we definitely made that clear in the resolution as well as to Director, interim Director Kirschbaum and her staff that was there. So I think we're solid on that point. Commissioner Nash?
Yeah. I want to thank Commissioner Goslin for taking the time. This must have been a tough resolution to write. And I do like the fact that it's a little bit broader than Commissioner Lynch's. And I just, I have a couple of comments and questions about it. First, in a previous resolution, you asked for a D dot to come before our ANC and speak in a sort of a comprehensive way about what they're doing. And I didn't see that in this resolution. And I wonder if that might also speak to Commissioner Zeldin's questions we just heard. And related to asking for the comment period to stay open, if that might settle the date on that, if we keep the comment period open, have them come before us. I think the community would benefit from some kind of a total presentation of what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how it's going to help. Because we're so focused on the problems and the negative stuff, I worry we've lost track of some of the good things. And that gets to a second suggestion I have for the resolution, not in the resolve, but before that. I would, I would suggest adding something to the effect that that we want to work with D dot, and D dot should want to work with us, because for this project to be successful, it needs community support. And the way to get community support is to collaborate with us. And this is what the resolution is trying to do. This is especially important, given the maintenance problems, and we have this pilot project. If we're going to try to encourage people to work on maintenance, then, you know, they need us, we need them type of thing. And I think you could, you could easily add that to the, the earlier section where you talk about how we've tried to work with them. Then I have a question. Use, I like the business about fifty percent, believe the parking, but I feel rather strongly myself about the problem of taking all of somebody's parking because a constituent of mine, George Anhang, faced that problem. And I'm, if some, if D dot came and took all of the parking in front of my house, I would call up my ANC commissioner right away and really ask for help. I, and you're, you're you do mention that, but it's a little weaker than I would like, and I And you do mention that, but it's a little weaker than I would like, and I wanted to understand why you don't go as far as I would like to do, which is just to say that that's, taking all of someone's in-front street parking is something that should not happen without the written consent of the homeowner. I'm thinking about my problems getting older, aging in place, and I'm not alone in that.
Well, let me respond in a couple ways. I'm certainly open to adding some language. With regard to meeting with the ANC under resolve 10, paragraph 10, we asked to meet with, we asked DDOT to meet with the ANC and residents from areas of disputed disputed locations or basins. And collaboration can certainly add something in the beginning. I recite our history of saying, from our previous resolutions, of saying, look, we are for improving water quality, and we are for using this less expensive, this cost-effective way of of doing it, rather than these gargantuan, capital-heavy piping systems and so forth. We could certainly add that, you know, given the nature of these changes, and given the problems with the past problems with maintenance, and the notion that we could help with maintenance, and as importantly, we could give them the benefit of the doubt with maintenance, until they improve. You know, they should seek our cooperation. We can add a paragraph with that effect, but I think that I think that this does most of what you want it to do, but I'm open to adding. Get your vote.
Yeah, but that's fine, Peter, yeah, adding something like that, I think would be good. But I was interested in having the ANC come before us, not just on the problem areas, but to talk about the project more as a whole, to help people understand the necessity of it, the value of it, how it'll work, and why, that kind of thing. I would like to hear it myself, but I think many, maybe other people would too. And your earlier resolutions did have that, so I'm not asking about just the problem areas, I'm talking about the whole shebang, so that we can, you know, I want to deal with the problems, but I don't want to lose sight of the benefits. And that, I'm a little worried about that, but speaking of problems, I would like it to be a little stronger on the not taking all the parking in front of anyone's house without their consent.
I think, well, I think that we address this apart by saying, only, asking them to only leave at least half of frontage free. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about, without, I'm concerned, and I think Commissioner Zeldin is concerned about basically giving residents veto power about individual things, because there's this problem of, you know, well, I don't want it here, so let's, let me kick it down to my neighbor, and then he doesn't want it, so he kicks it down. I mean, there's this, you could have this rolling mess, instead of like getting the right solution, the right compromise, and settling on it, even if it's difficult for some people. I think that that's one of the problems I have with veto. One of the problems I have with, well, and so I think that we, in fact, to the extent that I'm open to suggestions if you want to add some slightly stronger language.
It's not a veto in the sense that I, in other words, you could still have the biopit in front of your house, it's just that you're, you know, leave at least 30 feet so that someone can park there. Don't take it all. That's not a real veto. It's not like I'm saying you can't put anything in front of my house. I'm saying, you know, you really, it's just, it's a very extreme thing to take all of your parking.
So let me just say, I think one of the reasons why, actually Lisa raised this issue when we were talking about this afternoon. One of the reasons why I'm reluctant to say a minimum of 30 feet, for example, is some people, this is a resolution that's trying to address all the situations we face in the community. There's some people who don't have enough frontage that, I mean, you know, that they can't be reserving parts. If a person has a 30-foot frontage or a 25-foot frontage, I mean, you know, I mean, I just, I just, I'm concerned, so I'm trying to say, save half. So you get half of what you do have for frontage, and do make your best, make the best effort to be sure there are 30 feet, you know, openings, but, I mean, there are some people, some of us have large frontages, some of us have tiny frontages, and if we have tiny frontages saying, oh, but I still get 30 feet somewhere, it doesn't seem to make much sense. Anyways, that was a thing.
All right, I understand. I made my point, and I'll let other commissioners talk now.
Commissioner Sherman?
I will actually defer to our constituents who have their hands raised, and let me come in after that, because I'd like to sort of take stock of everything everyone's saying and share the experiences that we've had in our single-member district, since, again, we have of the 54 currently in our ANC, we have 26 of them, and we have two more scheduled for installation. One is going to measure 80 feet, and the other is going to measure 120 feet. So they're the largest possibly, probably, of any of the proposed bio-retention beds that would be installed in this next round, but I'll follow the citizens that are on the line.
Okay, let's go to Carol.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify the resolution. I'm a little confused. Does the resolution say that no more than half of someone's front yard can be blocked by a biopit?
Yes.
Okay, and does the resolution also say that 30 feet must be clear in front of someone's house for parking?
Here's what it says, Carol. It's resolved 11. In instances where DDOT proposes to site basins in front of homes, the commission asks that the department take no more than half of a homeowner's street frontage and make best efforts to provide a minimum of 30 feet of unencumbered property.
Okay, so I would like to point out that some people have a front yard that is composed of two legal lots. So that is the case on 28th Street. So that if you say that no more than half of the front yard can be blocked by a biopit, you need to say that no more than half of a legal lot can be blocked by a biopit, not someone's entire front yard, because someone may own a vacant lot, which is the case on 28th Street. So if you say, for example, that half of our front yard, half of our front yard could be blocked by a biopit, okay, that means, that should mean that the lot that our house sits on should not be blocked by more than 50%. If you, because we own two lots, we own a lot with a house on it, and we own a vacant lot. That's a garden. So if you say that 50% of our front yard could be covered, blocked by a biopit, that will mean that our entire house would be blocked, and our parking would be gone.
How's that work? I mean, I, so my memory of 28th
Okay, let me explain. We have a house. Let me start from the corner of Jennifer and 28th. We own, the corner lot is a vacant lot, it's a legal lot. The next lot has our house on it. The next lot is the Anhang property, which is one lot, which is one legal lot. So if you adopt what you just said you were going to do, if you say that 50% of our front yard can be blocked by a biopit, that means that our house will be completely blocked, unless you say, because our house is on the second lot. Do you understand what I'm saying?
But isn't the problem we're trying to address here to make sure that the lot that your house is on, that there is ready access from the street?
Yes. But if you, but if you consider that our two legal lots are one property, okay, and you say that half of our property can be blocked by a biopit, then our entire house will be blocked by a biopit. Do you understand, Lisa?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
There are other people, other people who have that situation in Chevy Chase.
Yeah, Peter, Peter, what she's saying is conceivably, they would have to walk out their front door, and then down the street in front of the lot beside their house in order to access parking.
That league, that league, that our second lot can be developed, we could build a house there tomorrow, okay? We can call up a developer and say, please, we'd like to sell you our second lot, and someone could build a house there, so if you say, do you understand? So
Would this problem be solved if the language said that can only, something to the effect that must leave at least half of the frontage?
Of a legal lot.
Yeah, as opposed to saying front yard, Peter, take the friendly amendment and say legal lot.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. My last question is, does the resolution also say that biopit size can be no more than 40 feet long? Is that included?
It is included.
Or two parking spaces, I'm not sure how long a parking space is. Is it 30 feet, 40 feet for two spaces?
Roughly, well, 40 feet for roughly two.
That's what I thought. Okay, so that's included in the resolution?
It is included in areas of high demand for parking from homeowners and nearby apartment dwellers. So Commissioner Sherman has some some areas where there are immense bio-basins proposed, and he has surveyed his constituents, and capable there, and I'm trying to find language that does not say, oh, no, DDOT, what we want is little, we want those big, long ones where the residents accept it, or where there's not as heavily a demand for parking to be broken up into multiple multiple basins, which seems wasteful and probably is, makes it less efficient. I don't know. I'm only learning this subject as we go along.
Carol, anything else?
No, I'm good. I just wanted to clarify that, and also, thank you for including that legal lot. I think that's very important. There are others in that situation in Chevy Chase. Thank you.
Got it. Okay. Barani, hope I pronounced your name right.
No, that's right. Thanks so much. First, I want to say thank you so much for all your attention on this, all the ANC members and council member Fruman. We really appreciate that. I'm one of the houses that, under their original plan, would be entirely blocked, so it obviously means a lot to me. One thing I wanted to note, I do think it's very important that we do a resolution rather than just wait for DDOT, because from what I was taught, when I was discussing, I was part of the Friday walkthrough on Chevy Chase Parkway, and one of the things, one of the DDOT folks said was that they are working on revisions to our particular area, but that the next thing we would see would be the final one, and we would have no further opportunity. And so, again, I agree, I don't, you know, I don't have the right to veto something that they want to do with public street, of course. But another chance to see what their revised plan is would be really great for the affected homeowners. And I absolutely agree with the concept of not taking more than 50% of the frontage of someone's lot, house, however you want to phrase it, because I do have strong concerns, not just for the loss of parking, but for the emergency access. And that is one thing, I don't know if folks or the council can take up, but I'm, just as a more global matter, is this even something that should be allowed or legal from a public safety perspective in terms of access for ambulance, fire trucks, and all that? I'm not sure if anyone has thought that through. So I would just say, not just for my own, for my own benefit, but really just for everyone in the city, if that's something folks could consider throughout. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Susan P.
Hello, Monday night friends. It's so nice of you to have a special meeting for us on Tuesday night. Really appreciate everyone's time and attention here. A few points I want to make after I was on the Friday tour. One is, it was very clear to me that the people from DDOT are very dedicated to the program's success and they're idealists, and they're following city regulations on placement of the bio-retention spaces. However, the regulations only talk about which spaces would be successful and from a drainage perspective and a utilities perspective. I think most of the residents were depending on the Greening Streets DC brochure that came out several years ago, I think, not in this term of the mayor, but the mayor's last term, that talked about the big picture of the plans, and there was a whole page that talked about how the city would choose where to put bio-retention spaces. And it said that they were only appropriate on blocks where the residents had sufficient parking available all the time. And that is not in the city regulations, and so the DDOT people, I talked to them about it, I talked to a lot of them one-on-one. They didn't even know about this brochure, and they're not actually asked from the city's requirements to look at the impact on residents and the larger community. So, Peter and Peter, if you can put in the resolution some language that says, we really think you need to look at the impact on the individual houses, on the block, and on the community. So that's my comment one. My comment two is for my neighbors on Nevada Avenue. I was really shocked that several of them have bio-retention spaces proposed that will take away all their street parking, and then they have no other place in their block where they can park. The only open parking is in a block that's got residential parking permits, and yet they don't have those permits. So they're saying, where can we park? The city's not leaving us any option within a block. So if you can add to the resolution that the DDOT really needs to consider whether it makes sense from an RPP perspective for my Nevada Avenue neighborhoods, I think that applies to other neighborhoods as well. I think my final point really is something that Peter Goslin brought up, and I was also very surprised to hear, I knew that they were designed to take 72 hours to drain, but when I was told, especially by the guy from the Department of the Environment, that, who's in the maintenance side, that they actually will be ineffective and will flood if it rains more than once every 72 hours, and that's not, we're not talking about a heavy-impact rain, and they will definitely flood if we have heavy-impact storms, like we've had every Sunday this year, it feels like. And so I just would like to say, maybe we need to take a step back and see, does this solution actually make sense? If it's not going to help with climate change, and it's not going to help with heavy rains, it's going to have a significant negative impact on households. And, you know, maybe they need to take a step back and come up with a solution if they're going to affect so many people that actually will work in heavy rain events too. Because it seems to me crazy to do this if it's not going to solve our climate change challenges. I actually said that was my last point. There was one more that I did want to bring up. Several neighbors have told me they've talked to real estate agents, because they think they'll move if this happens, and the real estate agents have warned them that property values drop dramatically with a bio-retention space in front of their house. And so I don't know if they were trying to encourage them to sell quickly, but I think if the city moves forward with more of these, we need to ask the Department of Tax and Revenue, and whoever monitors housing sales, monitors sale prices for houses that are impacted. And if there is indeed a decline in property tax values, I think all of our houses that are affected by these should have our properties reassessed, and our property taxes should be lowered. Because if my household, if my house is all of a sudden $200,000 less valuable, then I shouldn't be paying taxes on that old value if the city has harmed our tax value. So if you can put something in the resolution that we need the Office of Tax and Revenue to look at the impact on property taxes and property assessments, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening. Those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you. George?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I only have one point to make, and I don't want to belabor it. And I think as I start to make the point, you'll probably anticipate exactly where I'm going with it. On November 27, 2023, the commission passed a resolution that was transmitted to DDOT. And that resolution, of course, concerned And that resolution, of course, uh, concerned, uh, bio retention facility issues. Is there going to be language in the resolution currently being proposed that specifies that nothing in the new resolution is intended to supplant or supersede or displace or conflict with anything in the November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three resolution? I am concerned that if anything in the current resolution could be read as in conflict or intention with the commission's prior resolution, that someone might decide that the prior resolution has been superseded, is now a dead letter and can be safely ignored. And I think we would all agree, uh, that that's not the outcome that any of us want. Um, and we should take every step to ensure that that does not occur.
George, I think we, I think we take here, the very first paragraph of this, this new draft resolution reads, this is the third resolution that ANC three, four G has considered concerning the size, location and planned maintenance of forty, and the list now says four, forty curb extension bio retention basins in the district, uh, uh, the, that the district's Department of Transportation proposes to install in the Chevy Chase community. The commission references its overall broad branch stormwater retrofit project resolution and its fifty-three-hundred block of Twenty-Eighth Street Northwest resolution, both approved on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and incorporates the rationale and recommendations of both here. Does that do it for you?
Well. I mean, it raises the question whether, whether this in its final form will in fact in- incorporate, um, fully incorporate. Do you mean incorporate by reference the entirety of those prior resolutions?
That's my intention. I mean, it's why, why it says incorporate. It incorporates the rationale and recommendations, and those are the two pieces of the previous level of resolutions. Have you, is there stronger language you want there?
Well, I would propose, uh, that you consider, um, fully incorporate by reference. Um.
It says.
And noth- and nothing in those resolutions is, is altered in any way, uh, by anything set forth herein.
You can do that, Peter.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was the word? And nothing is, what was the word used?
And nothing in those resolutions referring to the previous ones shall be altered by anything set forth herein. And I'm sorry if I'm coming across as very persnickety, but I think you understand.
And my concern here is. Concern, I mean, I, I, I must say, you have to remember, we're an advisory body and we're not writing law here. We're, we're, we're nudging city.
Oh, I, I under, I, I understand that fully, and I, 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 I thank you for, for making that point, and the point is taken. But, but I think, um, my concern also has some validity that someone who gets the new resolution, uh, could conceivably be under the impression that the prior resolutions don't have to be paid any attention to anymore because everything is incorporated in this one. And of course, everything is not expressly incorporated. It's incorporated by reference only.
Well, okay, uh, that's fine. We can take this language. The other thing is that in addition to reference, um, the, the next several, the next several, um, uh, paragraphs of the resolution review the bidding from the previous resolutions. Summarize what we previously said. So there's a, there's a lot of overlap, but we can basically eliminate any, any doubt in that regard by, by, I mean, fully incorporates and nothing.
Commissioner Goslin, tha- thank you for, for being so patient and, uh, and, and thank you for your attention to the issue that I raised. I so greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. That's good. Um, Ron Khan?
Okay, I'll unmute. Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Oh, very good. Okay. I live on Livingston Street near Connecticut. My residence is not in the retention area. And though I did ask for a bio retention consideration in one area of my street due to major runoff from a poorly constructed contributing alley. Um, as I say, I live in, uh, Commissioner Lynch's area. So I'm not sure if my point's exactly tied to a resolution, but I'll go through them. Um, we talked about emergency services a little bit in terms of access. Is that something that EMS and hazard should review and sign off on is my point about that? Have they reviewed it? Should they be signing off on it? I would think so. Um, I have a longer term bio retention bed implementation question. Okay? Uh, going forward, how will D dot or, or Environmental Services enforce standards to review, uh, and approve construction plans that might significantly reduce established permeable areas? So how does it manage that going forward? Is that, is that something to consider? Um, another question, will new standards be enforced after our area is completed? And how will that process be communicated and occur? Um, and then there was a question about house value. I think that's a very valid question. Do we have evidence of that somewhere else in the city since this is a pretty large project, these retention beds? So, and obviously not sure how to remedy that. Um, I'd also say if standards related to runoff already exist, um, why do we need these retention areas or are the standards just inadequate? Um, leads to the question, why are we doing this a little bit? That was brought up, I think, by Nancy. Um, that's all I have to say. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Andy?
Hi, thank you. So, uh, thank you very much, Lisa. I, I just have three points that I would like to bring up. Um, I think everything that's been talked about is right on. I think this whole conversation has evolved tremendously since this first came up in September. Uh, what I'd like to, but, but it's also evolved my thinking. The first point I'd like to make, uh, and it was raised that we should bring them in to explain why they're doing this and, you know, the overall environment, which I support. One point that came up that troubles me greatly is the, I'm going to use the word bureaucratic, but I hate it. The agency centric or myopic view. And I say this because I once raised, and then at the Friday meeting, another gentleman raised that there is a, the, a major cause of the water going into the street is from homeowner's property. And it's perfectly legal because most of us had our homes built before there were regulations saying not to do it. Now, DDOE has a program now, it looks like a very good program, to help people do rain barrels and other kinds of abatements to prevent the water going in. I think that's wonderful. But D, every time I mention it or the other neighbor mentioned it, the immediate response is, oh, that doesn't help us at all with our target, our, our commitment of, of space. And my concern is that this project, which started, I'm sure, as a well-meaning environmental project, has devolved into a bureaucratic agency commitment and that we're only concerned with our area. And if you can reduce the water, the real problem, that doesn't count. I think that has to be addressed at some point. I'm not suggesting it go into the resolution or not. Um, I'm not trying to put it, but I, I think it has to be brought in. Um, second, I wanted to mention a point that Vernique mentioned earlier. Um, there's a fundamental problem here that the DDOT believes, and it may be true, I'm not a lawyer, that the street, that homeowners have no rights with respect to the street frontage that they have. And if that's true, I appreciate Councilman Frumman being here. I briefly talked to him at the, when he showed up on, when he was there on Friday. That's a fundamental problem. It changes the whole dynamic. When I go to buy a, a house, which we bought ours thirty, forty years ago, I've lost track, is your biggest lifetime investment. When you go to buy that house, you do all sorts of research, the water table, the relative, everything. And one of the things you research is, what's my parking going to be? Do I have a garage? Do I have parking? Where am I going to be? How does that fit? Once you've made that decision, that's a lifetime decision for as long as you're in the house. I believe homeowners should have a direct right, not an implied right, a direct right, that if something is going to impact the front of that house, that's going to change it. That's not a right to have it, it's a right to change it. But they should have a right, not only to be informed directly, we were never informed about this project directly, to be negotiated with directly, um, not through some broad hearing about, oh, yes, you can speak at hearing, which, which we've done, to then appeal the decision when it comes down. Because again, and then if the, if the decision is, no, your frontal property is so important to the public good that we need to take half or whole, whatever the part is, then you should be compensated for what is going to be a significant loss. So again, that's not an issue for this, uh, but I want to, we, we need to do this bigger because this came out of nowhere. I've been happily never thinking about my front parking for thirty years, and then all of a sudden this was a major issue. And I haven't had slept now in quite a few weeks. I know my neighbors, some of my neighbors are impacted, haven't, this is a very stressful, life ruining decision for those who it impacts directly. So I appreciate the, the ANC taking it on. Um, the, uh, my final point, which I've now lost, um, track of, so, um, uh, I guess I'll just, since I can't remember my final point, apologize, uh, is to say that I, again, I appreciate what you're doing. And I appreciate, I really appreciated, uh, director, the director's coming and now the, uh, saying that she's. The DDOT staff are excellent engineers. I can tell. I talked to some of them. But as, uh, somebody mentioned earlier, they are not at all considering impact on. And that's why we need to change that and have it can say, yes, maybe it's necessary to do something to the streets or remove the parking, to put a fire hydrant, to, you know, put one of these things to build some structure, maybe that's necessary. But there should be a process that respects the homeowner's decision whenever it was made. I remember my last point, so thank you for that, for bearing with me. Somebody just earlier mentioned, oh, this, you know, I, I, we, they should interview to see if there is somebody in the house who has a problem, you know, that would need that access. And I, the problem with that is that this is a lifetime structure. This isn't like over the next couple of years, it'll be there and it'll disappear. This is a lifetime structure. And so while today I can perfectly easily walk around whatever they build, maybe not tomorrow, maybe not next week. So I really think we have to address, uh, as, as, uh, Commissioner Goslin has, and Commissioner Nash mentioned, and others, this right to access, which you can give away, that's your right. But it should be imply inherent in it, and I ask, uh, again, Councilman Frumman, that the Transportation Committee make it clear what are the rights and justify, because I guarantee you, oh, I know my last point. Everybody on this call who owns a property or ever wants to own a property should be shaking in there in fear after this process, that sometime down the road, some idea will come up by somebody, maybe a good one, and they will lose the access. That has to stop. Thank you again for your time and all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. Let's go to Jerry Malletts.
Hi there, everybody. Um, I have nothing to say about any of your resolutions. You'll do what you want to do. I just want to bring up some, some information. So, uh, today I, I went out and Peter Lynch's SMD, I even crossed over into Peter Goslin's SMD. I took measurements at forty places in the streets at various points, uh, because I was concerned about a couple of things. First, I know that DOE got a grant from EPA, they're going to do these things. Hopefully the council will, uh, provide the money for the, the maintenance, which everybody's talked about before. We've all driven on the streets in this area and we know how we have to sort of pull over a little bit to let a car go by. And, uh, here's some measurements for you. Morrison Street, Livingston Street, Legation Street, North Hampton Street are all between twenty-seven and twenty-eight feet wide. They're not thirty feet wide as some people might think. Chevy Chase Parkway is ranges between twenty-seven and twenty-eight feet. The only street that's different is McKinley, which is thirty-three feet in many places, and that's because there's a bus on there. The, uh, US standard for parking space is eight and a half feet wide. Times that by two, that's seventeen feet. A street that's twenty-eight feet, that's eleven feet left, and that's why cars have to pull over. So if you start putting, um, bio retention beds in certain places, you're going to cause many problems. So for instance, I looked at the, uh, in Peter Goslin's SMD, the southwest corner of Military and Chevy Chase Parkway, where there are a lot of cones that were put in to prevent people from parking so that people driving, uh, north on Chevy Chase Parkway wouldn't have their vision blocked. That would be a perfect place for a bio retention bed. It's fifty-four feet by eight feet, just the size that they might want. That's not one of the options that they give. On every other corner in the SMD, there are restrictions on parking, uh, much like, I don't know whose SMD is, uh, Casada and Thirty-third. But on those two corners, on the, uh, corner of, on Thirty-third Street, there's a bio retention bed. On the corner of Casada, leading to Thirty-third Street, on the, the south side of Casada, there's a bio retention bed. Those spots were dead spots anyhow because their parking wasn't allowed because it was a corner, uh, location. There are many places, uh, that can be done. Bio retention beds could be done in, in those locations. Additionally, uh, the standard width of a parking space for somebody with mobility issues, wheelchair, some other kind of handicap is fourteen feet wide. That's the standard US, uh, for a parking spot, considering that somebody would need that kind of access. So if you have even one of those, uh, requirements on a street that is twenty-seven to twenty-eight feet wide, you're going to have some, some real issues. Additionally, when you have speed bumps, there's more issues with people having to pull over. And, uh, at least in one location at fifty-seven oh five Chevy Chase Parkway, um, let, let me say, I have none planned for in front of my house. This isn't about me. This is just things that, that I've noticed. Fifty-seven oh five is within fifteen feet of a speed bump. If you put a bio retention thing there where nobody parks because, well, a couple of people park there, but it's not a, a major place. Uh, you're going to have issues there as well. So I'm just pointing these things out. I don't know if D dots looked at any of these or DOE or whoever's looking at them. I know there's utility restrictions. I know there's tree roots restrictions. But, um, this is, in many cases, this is putting a, I think I have this right, a square peg in a round hole. Uh, things just don't fit. So that's it. Uh, I appreciate you looking at all this. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Let's go to Kevin.
Oh, hi, and welcome, everybody. Um, let me raise some, uh, technical points, um, which I think, you know, the, the top of the mind recommendation I have for the, for the ANC unfortunately is, um, it's probably time, if it's not already too late, to have a more technical conversation with D dot and, and Department of the Environment about what flexibility they have to make changes to their plans. So this is about the consent decree, and then the consent decree, they promised to, to create so many bio retention plans. I've worked four years on stormwater regulations. So bio retention plans are one of the best things and most cost-effective things you can do, but you have to do them properly. And you're hearing a lot of the problems that how not to do them properly. So you want to first find out what is the, what is the constraint for broad branch and these other projects? How many different cubic feet of, you know, water are they promising to hold or square feet? I'm not sure what units, I've never looked at this, what units are used. So what is the projection in the first place? What's their goal? So how much flexibility do they have to change from twenty feet to forty feet? to change from 20 feet to 40 feet? Or not, you know, do a 60 contiguous? The most cost effective plans you could have, and my computer is telling me it might die, the most cost effective thing you could do is to have a long retention plan in a place with a velocity of something like 10 degrees to 20 degrees. So they need to point out to you, what are the most cost effective places to plan these things, both flexibility, they have to make these changes, and I doubt they can, of cost effectively engage a constituent by constituent conversation about what happens in their house. So I think there are best practices for, for doing bio retention plans. There are manuals on this. Sounds like they're not following a manual. So in the next two weeks, perhaps you can engage in a more technical conversation with DDOT, find out what flexibility you have, and then they'll tell you, we need, you know, 20 degrees, we need 40 degrees, things like that. Peter.
Can I just address, I think the comments from several, Ron, Jerry, Malletts, and you all speak to this issue of we really could use an overall presentation. But I would say that both during the Friday walk around, which was a multi-hour event, and in our meeting today, which Council Member Frumman's office facilitated, we heard, we heard about a sort of a Venn diagram of overlays of federal requirements and of money deficiencies and of, of technical engineering issues and utilities and tree roots and that need to be avoided. And it is, I mean, it is, it would be useful for people to hear about all of these, these difficulties, and also as Commissioner Nash said, about the benefits of, of, this is, I mean, I, I mean, we've been engaged to the extent that we, we can talk about generally some of the problems that, for example, the DDOT engineering team faces, we've engaged in some of that conversation. We have not negotiated, you know, street by street, basin by basin. And I personally don't feel competent to do that. So, but I, I agree that I think they would, they'd solve a huge service if they came before us and did a full presentation.
We got two Commissioners and then Carol. And then Commissioners, we're going to need to wrap it up and start hammering out this resolution. So let's go with Commissioner Sherman, then Nash, then Carol.
So first of all, I am deeply appreciative of all of the neighbors who have expressed their views tonight and have expressed their views since last September, when DDOT's plans were made known to all of us in full. Neighbors on 28th Street will recall that I was happy to help out in Commissioner Nash's absence when he was on vacation. When we first got notice of DDOT's plans, Carol Grunwald and Neighbors George reached out. I organized a Zoom call with DDOT and Eric Schwartz, the chief engineer on this project, and a colleague were gracious enough to give us an hour of time to explain the very program that we're talking about. They did walk us through the program on that occasion. They took our questions. They heard the initial concerns that folks on 28th Street had, neighbors of mine had. The purpose of the call was primarily, of course, for my single member district, since we have, had these two big bio retention beds proposed at the intersection of Nebraska and Utah. They're large ones, needless to say, and one of them is very close to our house. So we held that call, and from there on, we've had an ongoing dialogue in fits and starts with a lot of frustrations. And I just want to credit again, the neighbors on this call and others who have spoken up. It's critical to make your voices heard. I believe what we've seen, and Peter Goslin and others have referred to this from DDOT and DOE, is positive. It's encouraging. It strikes me that they're listening. They're accommodating. We'll see what they finally come up with. We'll have to weigh in on that again. Fingers crossed it's all good. One thing I would say again, is that because this issue of bio retention beds is not a hypothetical for us in single member district 02, since we have 26 of them. They have been an issue for our neighbors ever since I became Commissioner. It's one of the things I've heard the most about, both during the campaign for this position and since assuming office. Who's going to maintain these? How can we maintain these? Why are these not maintained? It's a huge issue. So we had to jump on it. We had to really press DOE to take responsibility for the maintenance. In doing that, we also offered to be helpful. We said that we have a group of neighbors and there are about a dozen. In fact, the lead neighbor on this, John Burwell, is on this call tonight. He's trained by the National Park Service as a weed warrior. He understands an invasive species from a non-invasive species plant. He's excellent. And we have a whole group of neighbors who have jumped in and joined DOE and their contractors, the Rock Creek Conservancy and Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay to maintain these. I just got notice from Jim Woodruff, who is the, who is the head guy for DOE on the maintenance. He's indicated that of the 32 beds on Oregon, there's a contract for the maintenance of those that will go into effect right away. And there, the other 19 bio retention beds in our, in our larger area are being maintained now quarterly by the contractors for DOE, Rock Creek Conservancy principally. So I want to note to all who have not had these in their immediate vicinity, that maintenance, of course, is an issue. With, but we've gotten a handle on it, we're getting a handle on it, and we've been very assertive with our DOE colleagues on that score. I also want to say that with respect to other issues folks have raised, the flooding question, these beds are not meant to retain all the water during a heavy rain. They're meant to slow it. They empty the water into the, into the sewer system. So if you are out on any given day when there's a torrential rain, you'll see that the water flows down the street into these beds. A lot of that water is absorbed, but then it flows into the sewer system. With respect to decrease in property values, I certainly, if I didn't have one of these in my district or wasn't familiar with these, I would wonder about that. It's the first I've heard that it would decrease property values. We can be open to that. I have not heard that from my constituents. In fact, I want to stress this. Last fall, when DDOT proposed these additional beds, I conducted a survey of my single member district constituents. And each of our districts are about 2,000 residents. I have about 800 people on my mailing list. That's about 80% of households. So I reached out and I did a survey, and I asked people a very simple question with two parts. If the beds can be maintained properly, both current and future beds, and if parking impacts can be minimized, would you support the installation of additional beds? Very simply, I wanted to know, because I represent my district, I want to know what they think. And so the results of that were interesting. 56% of the people, even though many of those people also registered comments that they were agitated about the maintenance, 56% of the people said yes, they would support additional beds. Among those who didn't support them, there were some who didn't have enough information to make up their minds. There are multiple response categories. I say that not in any way, shape or form to diminish anyone's concerns who have not had these near them about the issues you've raised. Again, I'm very sympathetic to your concerns. They should not infringe on your parking. They have to be maintained. I'm simply sharing with you from our neck of the woods over in single member district 02, what the opinions, opinions of my neighbors have been about these, and also to say that we share all the concerns about maintenance and the rest. So I'm comfortable with the resolutions. I support what Commissioner Lynch initiated, and I thank him for his good efforts on this. Commissioner Goslin, Commissioner Gore for their comments, other Commissioners and the neighbors who've spoken. I think we can get to a resolution that reflects people's views, and we'll see then how we further negotiate with DDOT and DOE. I'm reasonably hopeful that they're listening to us. I think the signs are clear that they are. So with that, I'll, I'll end. I'm hopeful.
Lisa, if it's okay, can I just jump in for one second? Because I'm here, I'm trying to, I want to hear what people's concerns are and hear about what's going on. I've been in communication with various Commissioners on this. We are trying to be helpful in facilitating communication. I think today on maintenance was a place where that was successful. For right now, I'm going to continue to be listening. I'm just going to move to a computer where I wouldn't be able to say goodbye. We do have Lauren Lipsy from our office who is listening in as well. And I think this has been a very constructive discussion and an improving process, I think I would say. And I'm hoping that we can stick the landing. But with that, I gotta jump. I will continue to be listening, but I won't be able to talk from my next computer. Talk to you later.
Thank you so much. Let's go to Commissioner Nash, then Carol.
Yeah, I, I will be very brief. I have two, I promise, I have two responses to things that I heard tonight. One, in, with respect to Andy's idea, I myself have rain barrels and I love them. It's a way to water your, your garden and your yard for free without using drinking quality water, which is really stupid and costly, given the water shortage. And so I'm going to suggest to Commissioner Goslin that he consider some kind of language when, when we, let's say we're in a situation in there where we're, a resident is asking the DDOT to scale it back. Why not encourage DDOT to invite the resident, okay, we'll scale it back. Will you put in a rain barrel? You know, now, that, that's, that may be unworkable, but it's just so, such an obvious thing to do that Andy has suggested. That's suggestion number one. Number two, Commissioner Goslin, I'm going to send to you a link that I used in my original resolution on 28th Street. It's a brochure DDOT released called The Greening of DC Streets. And in there, they write specifically about bio retention pits that are adjacent to streets. And according to this official DDOT publication, these adjacent bio retention pits should not be used when there is parking on this, on the street. So I don't, I don't, I do not understand how that is compatible with, with what they're doing here, but I reference that as problematic when parking is tight. It seems to violate DDOT's own guidelines. Okay, I'm done.
Did you want to add?
Could I just address the rain barrel question? Andy, in fact, brought it up with Director Kirschbaum. And, you know, it, it would be, in a perfect world, it's a lovely solution. Basically, you want to keep Warf Street fronted, you make a deal to do something on your property that effectively moves the retention basin to your property. I, in fact, have them 200 gallon barrel, buried barrels. Her response was understandable though, which is that they're in no position to cut that deal. That basically they are, and she made, the DDOT people and the DOE people made clear at the Frumman meeting today, that they are under tremendous pressure from our, our stormwater permit, the new five year cycle that's underway, was approved in November, to put these things in. And the metric is not, you know, at least as I understood it from these conversations, it's, it's basically, this is what the city has to do. It has to cover, it has to cover 175 acres and deal with the water runoff in the roadway. They've made a commitment to not only control the, they've made a commitment not only to control the volume or so forth in the runoff, but also where they're going to control it. So that, you know, we could, we might be able to solve the problem, you know, in a small, beautiful way, but it sounds as if the, the overall framework, bureaucratic framework here and regulatory framework here wouldn't allow that to be taken into account. With regard to the reading of reading streets, I think Susan mentioned that before. It's incorporated via the incorporation now, where there's no light whatsoever between your previous resolution and, and this one. I can put a link into this one if you like. And I, when we get to it, Lisa, I'm happy to just run through what I understand, where I need to do language. I can't like make it up, you know, out of my head right now, but I think we could just, I can walk through the, what I understand the menu to be.
I agree. Okay. Carol and then Andy. Andy, you'll be the last comment.
Yes. Hi. I think George and Hank's hand is still up.
Yeah, George, I didn't know if you just forgot to take it down.
I have something important to say, but I would yield my time to, to George if he has something to say.
Took it down. I think he just forgot to lower it from the last, last.
So all I wanted to say is that our watershed is huge, and there's no reason why DDOT can't place these bio pits in reasonable locations. I would, I would just state that bio pits should only be placed in front of vacant green lots, along parkland or wooded areas, in commercial areas, or along the side of someone's house, not in front of houses. I mean, I think only if there are severe extenuating circumstances, should a pit be placed in front of a house. And DDOT would have to prove this and work with affected homeowners to devise the best outcome possible. If they, they would just locate these pits in this enormous watershed, not in front of houses, we wouldn't be having any of this discussion today. There would be no problems whatsoever. Thank you.
And Andy.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to address, Peter, thank you. You were there. Yes, we were there. The point that I heard was that there is an overall commitment that has been divided up between DDOE and DDOT. And therefore, if there's an overall commitment and they, and DDOE, in fact, has this program, which sounds great, where we can get, they should advertise it, that we can get some kind of rebates or incentives for putting in rain barrels. But what troubles me, and I worked in the federal government as senior executive, and I worked at state government at a high level, the fact that an agency can't, that can always be negotiated. The fact that nobody's willing to go to EPA or whoever is the controlling agency and say, hey, we can trade off this, is just nuts. I'm sorry, I've worked, it's just, I would, I worked at OMB. This would be considered nuts. It's terrible government. So that's all I'm saying is, if we're trying to solve the water problem, which we should be in, and I believe Susan P. mentioned this, you know, if we're trying to solve a problem, great, let's solve the problem. But the absolute best way to solve this problem is to decrease the water that goes in. And as you said, I want to, I'm going to go do it, but give us some credit so that we don't suffer for that. Anyway, I didn't want to take up any more time. You're muted, Peter.
Do I not recount the conversation that you and Director Kirschbaum had on this issue, standing there on, on McKinley, where, where we were, we were talking about whether we could in fact do this? I mean, it would be a beautiful, it would be a beautiful program to convince EPA of that, that, you know, like, you can either do it in your street or we can do it on people's property. But do I not recount it correctly that she basically said, I can't do that trade off?
She didn't say it. It was her, this project manager, Julie, I forget her last name. Yes, and she was frankly, she was dismissing everything. Okay, she, she's, she's an engineer, which is great, but to be fair, she had no interest in what this impact was having. But I, again, she was fine. She just said, no, we can't do that. And then she said to me, I should go do it anyway. I'll be helping the area. And that's fine. I want to help the area and I'm going to do it. But at the same time, as Carol just said, these, these pits are ruining people's lives. And Commissioner Sherman, you've mentioned the, the survey. I've been wanting to ask you this, so I apologize. Did you ever ask the people who are having it put in front of their house how they felt? Did you ever ask the people who are having it put in front of their house how they felt?
Yeah, sure. So I've, I've talked, um, Andy to, um. Scores of constituents about these bio retention beds, including those in front of their homes. Um, I'll mention two people in particular. So people that John Burwell, my neighbor, uh, who's on the call right now knows, he lives just across the street also from Dan Hemelfarb. Who's at Stevenson and Thirtyth Street. He has a bio retention bed directly in front of his house. And he's one of several neighbors who has taken it upon himself to go ahead and maintain it. Uh, long before, actually, we started our, uh, our pilot project, the DOE. Um, another person at Northampton in Oregon is Yvonne Smith. Yvonne Smith also has a bio retention bed directly in front of her house. And she has planted that, she's weeded it, she's nurtured it, she's taking care of it. Now, I'm not. In any way, shape or form, Andy, please understand me suggesting that neighbors. Have the obligation to do this and that it's not the city's responsibility. Of course, it's the city's responsibility. It has to be. I'm simply highlighting that, yes, I've spoken to lots of neighbors about them, uh, including those neighbors who have them right in front of their houses.
But I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, said if it was in front of my house, I'd probably go maintain it too. My, my question really was. In this was, this was after the fact. If, if they had their way, would they have fought it? Would they have wanted it? Are they pleased that this is now there?
Well, this is exactly what I was interested in knowing, Andy. That's why I asked him the question. You know, if in fact, um, they can be maintained. Uh, people know they're there. We have twenty-six of them. We're gonna get two more, as I said, two huge ones. And if they can be maintained and if parking impacts can be minimized, the very issues we're talking about here, I'm totally sympathetic to these concerns. Would you be in favor of more of them in the neighborhood? That's the question I asked and fifty-six percent of the people said yes. We had eighty-one responses in total.
And if I can just ask, how did they address the issue of access for themselves? Uh, if, if was it completely blocking them or was it like a partial?
Um, some of them are, are partial. Some of them cover, um, a good part of their front. We don't have a lot in the neighborhood that cover a good part of people's front yards, their front. Um, there, but there are, the ones that I mentioned are those particular cases. Um, they haven't. God's honest truth, they haven't. Those folks have gotten used to them, I guess, Andy. I'm not, I'm not rationalizing it. Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to sell it. I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you what they've said to me.
I, I may just make one last point and then I, I really need to get off. So most of, as you know, most of the houses on our block don't have driveways in the front. If they had a driveway, I assume they could not have put this thing in front of it. I presume that would be illegal, which that's an assumption. And if they now demanded, oh, well, we lost our parking, we require a driveway. How much water? And this is just, this is all just not planned right because that would add far more water to the table. Than what's happening now. So I, again, I've taken up too much time. I really appreciate your efforts.
Okay, can I, can I suggest that we try to move to hammer out something that?
Yeah, that, we have been trying to, Peter, but we keep getting raised hands from the community. I'm going to have to let this be the last comment. Cause we gotta move on. Um, Veronica and then, uh, Commissioner Zeldin, put a motion on the table.
Hi, I'll be super quick. Um, that last exchange was very interesting. If there are people that want to volunteer to have them in front of their house. I'm happy to like seed mine to whoever wants it in front of their house. I think if you really ask most people who don't already have these in front of their house, they would not be pleased to have them. A cons, you know, considering that frankly, not only are they taking away parking and access, but are not, are quite. You know, physically not very attractive right now, the way they're maintained. So, but again, if someone, if you know of anyone who wants one. And was willing to take mine over, I'm happy to seed it to someone else.
Okay.
Make a market in these things, right? You know, like we get people bidding on, uh, you know.
Commissioner Zeldin, do you want to, um, talk now or you want to wait till we have a motion, a resolution motion on the floor?
Well, I was gonna ask that we put a resolution motion on, on the floor. But I just wanted to reiterate something or support something that, um, Mr. Commissioner Sherman said, which is. In my, in, in my S M D, when I speak to people about these things. The overarching comment I get is about maintenance. That, that, that is, that is the single biggest issue that people. Seem to be concerned about. Parking, they seem to have figured out a way, uh, to do it. And like Bruce. My view of this is, is that as long as people have some access in front of their house, um. And that we make clear that. That's it. That's an important component to our, um. Res- resolution. I still think that what is missing in this rev- resolution, and Peter, thank you, I, I was able to open it and read it. Is the emphasis on maintenance as sort of a prerequisite for, for, for everything. Because if they're not maintained, they're, they're not valuable. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, let me go to, um, Commissioner Lynch.
I was just gonna ask, are, are we gonna have a time to add in some edits, like the one that Commissioners Ellen just mentioned?
All part of the process. So let me ask, um, in terms of structuring this. Um, if we're, you know, so we have two resolutions. On the table, one by Commissioner Lynch and one by Commissioner Goslin and myself. Commissioner Lynch, do you want to, um. Leave yours on the table or are you comfortable with. Going with the combo that me and, uh, Commissioner Goslin worked on? And if you have friendly amendments adding to that. Otherwise, what we'll do is we'll vote for yours first. And if that's voted up or down, then we'll proceed to the next resolution.
Yeah, like, like I said before, I think, you know, we're on the same page here and, and just collaborating all the best ideas into one is great. Um, I, I have been writing down a couple of points that I hope we could emphasize in whatever resolution is sent ahead. I don't know if this is the time you want to hear that or, or not.
We got, we gotta do that now. And I need a answer from you if your resolution is still on the floor or if you want to take it off the floor.
Well, I'd ask Commissioner Lynch to take it off the floor. I think I, I really went through yours and tried to pull. If you have other things to suggest, why don't you suggest them? And then. I will move my resolution and try to walk through all the edits that people have mentioned. Including Commissioner Lynch's.
Yeah, I mean, that's a structure we're gonna do, but I need Commissioner Lynch to make that decision. Otherwise, we'll put them on.
Yeah, that's fine.
Put them on the table. Are you okay with moving yours off the table?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um. Peter, you want to put a, uh, motion on the floor to move, um, the resolution?
I hope that the commission approve the draft resolution. Lisa and I have circulated with these changes. Get ready, folks. See if I've missed any, okay? Um, from Commissioner Sherman, include and ask for an overall presentation. For collaboration with the A N C, which this already does, uh, a, um, and residents, but also for an overall presentation of the logic. Uh, and the constraints of, of, uh, of, of the old Broad Branch project. Um, from, uh, from, uh, Carol, uh, Grunwald. A change in eleven and wherever else it appears, street frontage, homeowner's street frontage to legal lot. From George Ann Hanning, uh, change the language in paragraph one to include. Um, in, that this resolution fully incorporates, uh, um. The rationale and recommendations of the previous two resolutions and nothing in this resolution shall be seen as contradicting. Well, um, uh, what's set forth in those resolutions. I don't know whether it's, it does. From, uh. Uh, let's see, Google, uh, um. Uh, from, uh, Susan P. Um, I think we, we might want to, no, no, from, from Commissioner Sherman, um, and from, uh, Commissioner Zeldin. A separate thing under resolve to, to deal with, um. The maintenance issue. And I can contribute, Lisa, Lisa and I can contribute some things from the, the maintenance, the O E E meeting. Um, today, but, uh, if, I mean, if you have language you'd like to see in there, including mention, which is already in there of the pilot program. Um, that, uh, is occurring in Commissioner Sherman, I guess Zeldin's district, maybe, uh, yours. Um, that's all fine. Um, Susan P. mentioned, and I think this would be a useful addition, the residential parking permit. This was, she mentioned it in relationship to Nevada Avenue. I mean, to, one way to solve this problem. Is to simply ask D dot, which I think puts up the residential parking permits to just simply. Ex- extend that to areas that would allow people on, on, um. Would give people on, on Nevada some, some of the parking. And in other areas where we have crowded parking, we might consider asking them. Whether they would, uh, ex- expand the residential parking, uh. Permit. Okay, how, how am I doing? Is there, is there other?
Yeah, there's a couple other, so also under Susan P., I think, which was really important. Um, the need to look at the impact on individuals, neighbors, so just the, the individualistic impact. Do you have that on the list?
Uh, what's that one? Was that property values?
No, well, she asked about that too, but she also talked about. Looking at the placements from a individual, individualistic neighborhood centered way. As opposed to just the engineering way. That their plan say this is the best place to place it. You have to also look at it from an individualistic perspective for each neighbor.
You, you would, you, could you send me after the, what I'm proposing here, Commissioners and, and people on, on the, at the meeting?
Yeah, I can send you language on that, Peter.
We're working out, we'll work out the detailed language and make sure.
But I, I do think that's really important. And when, if you remember too, on the walkthrough, what we can add to that is, um, and I can't remember who said it, if. Someone remembers, throw it in the chat. But they specifically said, it was specifically mentioned about the best way to do this. And there was a discussion about, um, the permeable pavers, um, the differences. Um, and this goes back to some of the other stormwater management techniques. Where they said, this is the best way to do it, the bio retention cells. Um, and the crowd was kind of like, well, we, okay, obviously you're, you're gonna pick the best way to do it. It's not necessarily the best way for us. So I think we need to mention something in there about, you know, this is, this is like, you know, individualizing it. For neighborhoods and people and houses, just getting down to, you know, that individual component.
Okay, and I, the other thing I think we want to mention that remind me of here is that. A- as, as several people have said, this system is not designed. Coke with torrential rains, which we have a lot of. So, um, I think adding a provision that would suggest that. They, they fix the storm drains that are completely, uh, such as the ones at the corner of Oliver and, um. And Chevy Chase Parkway or at the corner of Legation and Chevy Chase Parkway that are completely collapsed so that. There's no way anything is gonna get in there and, uh, in tandem with this. With those accepted as friendly amendments, I move that the commission adopt, um, the A N C three four G further resolution.
Ho- hold on, Peter, could we, could we run through just to check a couple of other things? And I, I think Zeldin.
Um, well, we got a motion on the table, so we gotta deal with the motion first. So.
Who put a motion on the table?
I tried to.
It hasn't been seconded.
Well, that's, and we're not, we're not, hang on a minute. You're right. And the proper procedure is to second the motion before anything is done, including discussion. So.
Why move? Uh, does anybody second?
I second.
What's the motion for?
The motion is to approve the, the graph resolution that Lisa and I produced. With friendly, the friendly amendments I just ticked off. Now, there may be other friendly amendments, including from you, Peter. But that, that, I mean, I'm trying to respond to two hours of meetings and the changes that we. Agreed to during the course of the conversation and say, I will take all those as friendly amendments and I will draft them tomorrow. Uh, I mean, I'll add the language tomorrow. Um, so do you have?
Do we just want to continue the conversation with the things that we want to add from the meeting before we?
Well, I, 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 hold it. I, what I hoped was I just ticked off everything that we want to add from the meeting. You may have, have other things, but I, I mean. But, um, I, 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 I went through Carol legal lot. George, you know, fully incorporate. Nash, overall presentation. Uh, Susan P. residential parking, Susan P. individualistic look. Goslin talking about storm drain being fixed. What else have I? So, uh, those are, I'm, I'm already committing. In what we.
Let's cut, let's make it short. What other things, Peter, do you, Peter Lynch, do you want to add that hasn't been mentioned?
Thank you. Just, just double checking here. So, uh, we heard about the real estate property values. So adding one that says if there's an adjustment to property values. Then evaluating an adjustment to taxes. Is, are, okay with that?
I don't know if I'm okay with that, but.
May I, may I just, may I just add something quickly? Gi- given the extensive experience the city has had with these already. We're not the first ones to propose this probably. So the question would simply be, has this been a thing? Um, you know, and.
The city says there are four thousand basins, so we ought to know something about the property.
Yeah, exactly. If, if there has been adverse impact on property values, then that's been, of course, accounted for in terms of assessments, right?
Uh, how about, how about Peter Lynch, if we said, uh, that, uh, we asked D dot, uh, to provide us with information. Uh, about the property value effects of bio retention basins that elsewhere in the city. As a, as a, as a first step towards un- trying to understand that issue better. Is that, is that satisfactory?
I don't think so. Be, why don't we just ask if there's an impact on the real estate values and the tax issue in our area?
Um, well, I, I'm looking, I want to be sure we have a good vote on this, uh, is, is.
Well, can, can Peter, Peter, can I just jump in? Again, we, we have experience with these. Um. There's, I, I, I know nothing in my single member district about diminution of property values based on a bio retention bed being close by or diminished. Assessment for property tax purposes. I mean, I, I just don't know about it. We can ask. I'll keep an open mind surely about it, but I haven't heard anything. And among the many, many things my neighbors have talked to me about, by way of complaints of these, surely that would have come up at some point, one would have thought. I don't know.
Bruce, has anyone in your district lost all of the street parking in front of his or her house?
Um, I'd have to, Jim, go back and look very specific. I know in front of Dan Hemelfarb's house at Thirtyth and Stevenson. He, there's a, a lot of his parking is gone and so is Yvonne Smith, although she has a driveway. I'd, I'd have to check.
Jim.
We just seek clarification. I don't see how that could hurt. That's.
Happy to see clarification. I mean, I, I mean, but I, I, you know, I, I think that. An if then statement, if property values diminish, and we're, we're, we're trending in stuff that. Property values diminish, trying to prove that it was a bio retention basin. So we're just weighing into an area I'm concerned about. So I, I think it's.
Peter, if a property value goes down, that'll be reflected in your next assessment. And then your property taxes will go down, right? That's automatic.
That should be how it works, right? I mean, the sales will go down and therefore the value will go down. I, I. Um, well, let, let, can we put that aside? I think, uh, Michael also has some things to add. We'll, we'll come back to that, Peter.
Okay, so, well. Again, just seeking clarification. It's asking a question, nothing more. Uh, you know, it's not.
Well, well, okay, but there, you mean, so if clarification, I mean, I'd be happy to ask, this is included provisions to ask the city what. Experience either citywide or with existing basins in A N C three four G. It's a different question to say that we call for a city program that assesses that, that.
I didn't say anything about a city program to call for.
Oh, okay, I'm happy to add language to, ask for clarity, ask for what, what the city knows about effects on property values of bio retention bases. Both citywide and in A N C three four G. Is that satisfactory?
Great. Okay, and then we, I just wanted to clear up, do we have something that takes, that asks D dot to take. The impact of the entire neighborhood if.
That's what I mentioned prior.
Yeah, I just want to check on that.
I'm sorry, is that what you're, that was the language you're suggesting? Okay, yeah, okay. So we have that.
And then did we include extended time for people to weigh in?
And, and in fact, I think that's something we have to decide. I, I offered two suggestions, March 15th and April 1st. I'm happy with April 1st, but you know, what, what do, what do Commissioners sense about?
Yeah, I, I, I thought we should tie that to them coming to speak before us in a general way. And so what you could, what I would propose is you say, speak to us before April 1st when the, when we would like your comment period to close. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we effectively already say that, which is, which is don't, don't come to us with final decisions. Talk to us first. But is April 1st a decent date to pick?
That's April Fool's Day. It's perfect.
So, and then Michael, do you have suggested?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say, Peter, respect of the placement, the language I had just made a note to myself was that placement of basements should be made taking account of the best interests of the community as a whole.
Okay, I'm happy to accept all those as friendly, those additional friendly. With any further discussion on that?
Let me, let me go to Carol. Carol, did you have a comment on the proposed motion? Okay, I think she might just have her hand raised. Okay, any more additional comments?
Question? Well, what was the, what was the, the decision, Lisa, about taxes? I'm very skeptical about the impact of bioretention facilities on homeowners' values.
Yeah, Michael, I mean, Peter or, well, both Peters, can you go back over that? I'm a little concerned about that too. I just want to make sure the language is right.
My understanding is that we, I will add language that says we will ask DDOT what its experience is in our community with the existing, the effect of existing bioretention basins on property. And then it turns out that the city has 4,000 of them already all over the city. What's their citywide experience? But it's, it's an information request, a clarification request.
That's fine with me.
And just to let the community know, while we're discussing the motion, I'll come to you guys after the Commissioners, that's finished. Because it's just Robert's rules, we're trying to get the Commissioners on the same page with the motion, then I'll come to the community. Okay, so you're good with that, Michael? Okay. Commissioners, any more discussion from you all?
Just one very quick thing. Peter Goslin, in the reference to this pilot program we have, could you just insert a line acknowledging our gratitude to the neighbors, the constituents who have volunteered their time? Because a lot of people put a lot of time in on this and I'd like to acknowledge that.
You want to offer me, you want to send me some or?
I, I will, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, Bruce, you had a really nice write-up. I don't know where I saw it, but something you had written up was really nice. We should just copy and paste something you've already drafted.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send Peter something.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, I completely agree. Okay, Carol?
Yes, yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, hi, I just wanted to say that the vast, vast, vast majority of bioretention pits in the District of Columbia are located in front of apartment houses, commercial areas along wooded areas. A very tiny few are located in front of people's houses. So you can't compare the loss of property value, values that way.
But aren't the 35, aren't essentially all of the 35 along Oregon Avenue, for example, in front of people's houses?
Not all, no.
The ones from, the ones from, the ones from military to Nebraska are in front of people's houses. And Carol, you make a very good point and, and I won't, I won't dispute that point at all. I'm just racing through my mind and looking in my mind's eye at the bioretention beds that we have in our neighborhood. And.
Someone mentioned 8,000 bioretention pits in the District of Columbia. There aren't 8,000 in front of people's houses.
No, no.
They're downtown, they're all over the place. So, so asking the city for a broad, you know, broad brush look at, you know, do these things, you know, diminish property values, you have to separate out where these things are located.
Okay, so Peter, in your, in your language, ask DDOT
operable, okay.
specify it in front of private homes.
Or family houses.
Right, right. But just, just to clarify, they are in my single member district. There are a number of them in front of people's houses. I just, just to be clear. Yeah, thanks.
That's also true in front of mine, in mine. Generally speaking, though, I think there is still workarounds for parking. No one has really complained to me about parking, just maintenance.
Carol? You're on mute.
Thank you, everybody, for your attention to these issues. I wrote comments in the chat. Do those count too?
I have pulled some of them out and texted a few to Commissioner Goslin so that we could capture them. But if you have comments, I would make them because we're not really directing comments in the chat any longer.
Oh, I did, I did earlier comment in the chat, some of the.
What I'm saying is, if you want to, the important ones, say them out loud.
Okay. The first one was, again, I, I thought that the Director of Transportation was really responsive during the discussions and I think they finally got it. But there were two things. One is the fact that, as I understand it, the goal of these bioretention facilities and the plan is just to deal with normal flow and not for the heavy intense rains that we know are going to be even more frequent over time because of climate change. And I at least think that they should, again, the perfect should not be the enemy of the good. But the reality is that we need to know how they perform during those intense rain events. And, and, and what are the limitations and what are the implications of the limitations for flooding and, and our communities? That was the first one for point I was going to make. And the second is the need to look at stormwater management in a more holistic way, including some of these other measures. Now, I think from the standpoint of a consent decree, it's not going to be sufficient to have homeowners promise to do things when they hold the, the district accountable for stormwater management. And so, but I think that assumptions about certain programs and permeable pavements and, and so forth could be built into this. And I agree with the comment that was made before that I don't think we should assume that you can't go back and amend the plan, the proposals with some good analysis. So that's, that's another point. So I don't know how far you want to go with this. It kind of gets on the edge of things and I, and I understand why people can't claim a right to the public space in front of their house. They don't have a guarantee of a parking spot and all of that. So we have to be careful about that, but I just wanted to make those two points. Sorry. They're all tired, but I had made them earlier.
No problem, we appreciate it. Okay, Commissioners, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution proposed by Commissioners Goslin and Gore with the friendly amendments mentioned in our discussion, please raise your hand. Okay, that's six, zero. All right. Perfect. So with that, Commissioner Goslin, we can work together on making sure we get these amendments done. I'm assuming, just to confirm, that we're going to send this off to DDOT before the official, even though we're asking them to extend. Okay, which is the ninth. Okay, so Commissioner Sherman, let me put you on notice. Please be standing by for the resolution because I'll need your signature, then my signature to get it all off in time.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thanks to all the members of the community. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you to Commissioner Goslin, who did a lot of hard work on this, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you and to Commissioner Lynch beforehand. So thank you both and Commissioner Gore. Thank you.
Hey, Lisa and Bruce, would you take a look at the draft Lafayette Field Resolution that I sent around?